Green light. You're on now. Surely, yes, you're on. You're on now.
Oh.
It's working.
You ready, Dean?
Yes, we are ready. Do we have a call?
Yep. We'll have a call on. We'll bring this meeting to order. And going off the agenda today, item number one, approval of summary minutes on the December 18, 2012 regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes of the December 18, 2012 meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any others? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. We'll continue to public hearing items. Number two, application Z 12-24 filed by Dr. Earl O'Hara on behalf of Boston Enterprises LLC requesting a change in zoning district classification from C1 to C3. We'll hear from City's Dean Andrew report.
Going to let Mr. Hurst report to you on this. He's more familiar with this particular project and property.
Just a reminder to the commission, this is a quasi judicial action, and we do have two attachments, attachment number one and attachment number two at the end of the staff report that you'll want to keep in mind as you deliberate your decision on this. This particular property is a property on South Ohio, Discover Dental Center is the name of the business that currently operates there, and it's owned by Dr. Earl O'Hara. And the property is a hair shy of 48,000 square feet, so it's about 1.1 acres in size. The surrounding properties are zoned C1 to the north and to the west. So to the north and to the west, all those properties are zoned C1. This is the Shipple addition here, this whole block, and the properties to the east and to the south are all zoned C3, which is the requested zoning change that the applicant is requesting here. The Shipple addition was originally platted in 1957, and the particular property that we're looking at today remained vacant until a conditional use permit for a bank was approved in 1978. And it remained a bank until the current owner, Mr. Dr. Earl O'Hara, bought the property and did a remodeling project to remodel the bank to his doctor's dental office and an attached office tenant space as well. So looking at the photo here, we have the dental office, which is the main portion of the building, and then there's also an attached tenant space to the north, which is currently vacant. In September of 2012, Dr. Earl O'Hara approached city staff with a sign change request, and because this is currently zoned C1, the maximum square footage of a ground sign is 32 square feet. He currently has a grandfathered in 45-square-foot sign and was proposing to have a 75-square-foot sign, and that required a public hearing with the Board of Zoning Appeals. The Board of Zoning Appeals met on his requested variance in October of this year and denied his application three to one. That left Dr. O'Hara with three options. One, he could propose a new sign that met the 32-square-foot maximum restrictions. He could apply for a lesser variance with the Board of Zoning Appeals, one that was less than the 75 square feet that he originally proposed with the board. Or a third option is to rezone the property from C1 to C3, which would allow him to have greater flexibility in his signage and also have greater flexibility in his tenant space that currently is vacant. And so that brings us to today where Dr. Earl O'Hara and his representative here have decided to move forward with requesting a zoning change to C3 in order to have more allowable uses for the tenant space as well as increased flexibility in the signage options as well. The intent and purpose of the C1 zoning district, which is what this property is currently zoned, is to allow a restricted commercial alternative to multifamily development along arterial streets. Primarily what you see in the C1 district are business and office uses. It's usually looked at as a transitional zoning between residential and other commercial uses. The intent and purpose of the C3 district is somewhat similar, except it does allow for more retail uses and specialty shops and does require a zoning district of no less than one acre, which the subject property itself exceeds one acre, and there are several C3 properties to the south and along the east side of Ohio in this area as well. So when we look at the bulk regulations of this particular property and how it relates to the C3 bulk regulations, the property would meet or exceed all of the C3 regulations. So we would meet all of the size requirements for the lot. We would meet all of the setback requirements that would typically be required in a C3 district, and the property does have enough off-street parking. And as part of the 2010 remodeling that the applicant conducted, or when they did their remodeling job, they did spruce up their landscaping and improve the front yard landscaping to meet the current regulations, even though the building was constructed prior to the landscape regulations going into effect. So the suitability of the site for development under the existing zoning, this factor deals with the suitability of the property and how it is affected by the C1 zoning. The applicant states that the Discover Dental Center currently faces South Ohio, which is a retail corridor primarily, and that most of the properties surrounding it, with the exception of those in the Shipple addition where the property is located, are all C3. And staff would agree that most of the properties in the area, particularly those to the south and to the east, are all C3. However, we would point out that the Shipple addition, which is the area that John is showing there, and is the C1, the lighter pink, is entirely zoned C1, and that rezoning this to C3 would interrupt that unity that currently exists within the Shipple addition. Additionally, the signage allowed in the C3 district is quite a bit greater than what is allowed in the C1 district. The C1 district does not allow a sign greater than 32 square feet, where the C3 district does not have a maximum signage for a single sign, but rather looks at your total allowable signage that you're allowed for your property, and then allows the owner to allocate that signage appropriately as they see fit. So four square feet are allowed for each lineal foot of building frontage. This property does have two frontages, one on Ohio and another on Shipple. So there is quite a bit of signage that this property would be allowed to have. So that would be a major difference, as well as the maximum height limitation in the C1 district of eight feet, where in the C3 district you can go up to 30. So those are two primary differences there. And staff also agrees with the applicant that this property is not located adjacent to any residential property and really is not a transitional property, but is similar to those other properties along Ohio that you see to the south and to the east. It is also a larger property when compared to the other properties in the Shipple addition. You'll see this orange line, these orange lines that are kind of faint on the screen, but this is the subject property compared to the other properties in the Shipple addition, and it's at least twice the size of any of the other properties, and is more in line with a lot of the C3 properties you'll see to the south and to the east. The character of the neighborhood deals with whether the requested zoning, requested zoning of C3, is compatible with uses of the nearby properties. And as I mentioned, most of this particular South Ohio corridor has a mix of commercial uses. There are C1 properties, C2 properties, and C3 properties. The C1, as I mentioned, are primarily designed to accommodate businesses, where C2, professional office businesses, where C2 is small businesses to serve nearby neighbors, and then the C3 are businesses that serve the entire city or the Salina area region. The public services on the site have been established and installed. All of the infrastructure is in place and is adequate, and there are no changes to the property being proposed that would result in a need for any greater services than what already exists. When we look at the conformance to the comprehensive plan, the future land use map shows this area as being neighborhood center, which is a land use designation that is compatible and appropriate with both the current C1 zoning and the proposed C3 zoning. So the proposed zoning would be in conformance with the land use that has been called out in the future land use plan and the comprehensive plan. When we look at this particular proposal and we analyze it as staff, the primary differences that you see is that C3 allows for more uses, has a greater broader flexibility in the types of uses, as well as a greater flexibility in what you can do with your signage. What it comes down to is whether you see the proposed property fitting in more. If you could go to the map, John, again. The zoning map would be fine. Whether or not you see this particular property fitting in more with the character of the C3 properties to the south and to the east, or if you see it being part of the Shipple addition unit and being more like the C1 properties that you see in the Shipple addition. There, staff has outlined three findings of fact that we have come up with in analyzing the requested change, and we've also lined out four different alternatives. One is to approve the C3 requested change. Another is to recommend approval for a lesser change to either C2 or a PC3 that would have limited uses and maybe possibly sign restrictions if you feel that's necessary. Or the planning commission could table to allow the applicant or staff to provide any additional information that you feel is necessary, or the commission could deny the request by the applicant. And again, I think it really comes down to how you feel this particular property fits in with the neighboring properties, whether it's more in keeping with those to the south and to the east, or if it really belongs with the other Shipple addition properties. And with that, we'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dustin. Great report. Any questions for city staff, Dustin, or anyone else?
If we were to support this application, does it still need to go through the public hearing process and the posting of the sign out front that says this subject of, this property is subject to rezoning and that whole procedure?
This is the public hearing, and that sign has been posted. If you do recommend approval, what will happen is it'll need ultimate approval from our local legislative board, which is the city commission, and so it'll have to have two readings with the city commission. But as far as the public posting and the public hearing, the public hearing has been posted and assigned. Letters have been sent out, and the journal notice was provided to the Salina Journal, and that was printed in the Salina Journal. So at this point, we're just here to hear from the public.
Thank you.
Dustin, what, can you, without super exact numbers, can you give us a rough idea of what the maximum allowable signage would be if this was converted to C3?
John, can you, do we have access to the GS today with the measuring tool?
Is it Bank Six, C3?
Yeah.
Dean's got a calculator. He's going to figure it out here real quick.
Well, what I'm trying to do is just get a handle on what the maximum would be for that location, since it does have two frontages there.
I think he's asking for...
The maximum allowable signage would be about 1,600 square feet, which probably isn't even achievable.
Certainly, it's achievable. He's the creative sign guy.
That's using the 230 feet of, or the 185 feet along the south property line and the 230 feet of frontage on Ohio. So again, the...
That's, yeah, that would be street frontage.
That'd be street frontage. You're after building frontage.
Yeah. I don't know exactly what the building frontage is, but I could, if it's important, I can go run upstairs and find it out.
It's not that scale off this.
Two questions. On the development down from you where Bank Six would be, I noticed that's all C3. If he could bring that up. Not sure whether he can bring up that slide. The other yellows, so Bank Six would be there on the corner. The next would be, is that Horizon Dental?
Yes.
Was that always PC2? Or why was everything else C3, and that brought in as all PC2?
The PC2 actually... This is PC3, and this was PC2 along with everything else around Brock Road. And the reason for that is because it's a dead-end street, and you want, the idea was to limit the traffic and limit the over-intensification of those properties, so that those properties would not be used at a level of intensity that a typical C3 would. And so by doing a PC2, you limit the types of businesses that go in there and then therefore limit the amount of through traffic you have as not to overwhelm that short dead-end road.
So that when the QuickLube went in there, that they went through a zoning change from PC2 to C3?
I believe that is correct.
So it has been done up and down that corridor of Ohio?
That was done primarily because of signage also.
But it's hard to make out, but that Brock Road actually dead-ends right there in a cul-de-sac, so it's a short dead-end road, and that's the primary reason for the zoning that you see around there.
Dean, would one option, or I should say Dustin, would one option that the commission could vote on if they approved C3, but could they put a limitation on the signage, even though C3 qualifies for 1,600 square feet? He's only asking for 75 with a, I don't know, he says he can go up to 30 feet on C3, but is that something that we could look at after hearing all that? I mean, can you put special arrangements or addendums on C3 as long as, I don't know what the word I'm looking for there?
Yeah, that would be actually option number two there, where you could do a planned C3, which if you look at just to the south of there, one of the particular properties you brought up with the Kansas QuickLube property, that's actually a PC3 property, and that was done in order to allow the type of use and the type of signage that they needed while still reining in the uses and not allowing a full C3 gamut of uses that are typically allowed in the C3 district.
Okay. Any other questions for Dustin? Hearing none, we'll hear from the applicant at this time.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jeff Mace with Compro Realty, 157 South Seventh. As usual, the planning department did an excellent job on their staff report and took a lot of my bullet points. I can just be redundant, and I'll try not to do that. Really, the applicant's request is twofold, in that one of the uniquenesses of the property, not only in size as it compares to the rest of the Shipple addition, but also it is a multi-tenant facility. When he built that, when he did the remodel, the decision was made at the time to go ahead and shell out some additional tenant space, approximately 1,350-foot of tenant space to the north of the dental office. That was done both in thinking of future expansion for him, but also just good use of the property because of the size of the lot. We felt like we could still park it well, et cetera. So the flexibility, it's not just simply a signage issue, but rather the flexibility from a tenant issue as well, and then being able to give adequate signage for both Dr. O'Hara's office and a future tenant. We have had it on the market for a year and a half, going on two years. We've had a number of people look at it, and we've discussed the idea that had been more applicable to C3 users. We've discussed the idea of rezoning and going through this process, and unfortunately, many times we don't have that 45, 60-day window to determine whether we can do it to then do build out. People haven't planned that far ahead. So it is a matter of getting, you know, leaseability as much as signage is part of the motivating factor of the request. Again, the lot size, you know, it's nearly double, in some cases, four times as large as the other properties in Shipple. We understand the staff's noticing that it would break up some of the congruency in the Shipple addition if the corner lot were to go C3, but again, it's our feeling that it's appropriate as you look at the rest of that Ohio street corridor with the bank and the other dental offices all being in C3. I guess with that, again, it's not 1,600 square foot of signage. That was, the calculation was run on frontage, and I don't know the exact allowable amount with the building calcs are, but it's going to be much less than that. I think the calc Dean ran was on street frontage, and it'd be on building frontage. So as you're thinking in your mind's eye, Commissioner Maxwell, it's not near that. It wouldn't be 1,600.
Do you happen to know what that building frontage is on both sides?
I don't.
Do you? Do you remember? The width and the depth of the building?
I don't, I'm sorry.
Well, if you're at the question phase...
I think one point that I might make, and sorry to interrupt, but, you know, the other aspect, when it comes to exacerbation, if you will, of signage, you know, Dr. O'Hara is, he built it as his professional office for his career, and I understand the zoning may well outlive that aspect of it, but, you know, Dr. O'Hara's not going to do anything on that property that would be detrimental to his professional practice either, so.
So would you be against or in favor of if the commission decided to do a PC3 designation with a maximum on signage, say, of 100 square feet? Would that be something you could be on board with?
Yeah, I, again, I could see there being a happy medium there because of the professional nature of his office. I think we could find some common ground there for sure. It's only 1,332 square foot. When we do, when we represent tenants in multi-tenant environments, the language that always exists in the leases, the tenant is only allowed the, they can only put in as much signage as be allowable for their frontage per city code anyway, so we would break it out. They, it wouldn't, they wouldn't be allowed to access that extra signage for the Shipple Drive frontage, if that makes sense, in the tenant space. But yes, to answer your question, I think we could probably find some common ground there. What's occurred is that the sign that was there was grandfathered in from a previous time, and Dr. O'Hara's brought on partners and needs to modify that sign. The conversation was had with staff. I was in favor of rezoning just from the get-go to get us to this place from a tenant standpoint and flexibility, but we decided we would go through the variance process, and, Mr. Andrew, you might be able to speak to, it's my understanding that the appeals board has never granted any form of variance just on signage credit alone, but in our case, it's more than just the signage question.
And follow-up to that. When you went in front of the variance, you asked for 75 square feet with a height of 14 feet. Is that, again, something that, if you were looking for that variance before, if that's put in a PC3, are you looking for more or less of that, or is that something that's adequate still?
That was a signed design that was approved by the owner of the property at the time that was designed by the company. Obviously, the base that exists, there's a substantial amount of money involved in that. We'd rather not get into the business of having to tear all that out, but, I mean, we understand the concerns, and we don't, we're not a buffer from residential, but we could be a buffer from C3 to, you know, Dr. Johnson's place to the north, so, you know.
But that's 35 square feet there, is that correct?
No, I believe that is 45.
So you wanted to go...
The proposed sign was 75, and in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
With 14 feet, how tall do you think that, I mean, when you're saying 14 feet, you're saying from top to bottom, is that how they measure that then, from the maximum?
From the ground to the top.
We didn't, I apologize, I didn't come prepared to talk. We were looking at it more from just a straight zoning standpoint, so I don't have the proposed signage. Dustin, do you have that stuff?
For what?
For the Board of Zoning Appeals. Do you have what we proposed from a signing standpoint to give them a sense of what we're talking about?
We can call up that particular sign.
We have the...
You have that photo, John? This was the sign that was proposed to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
And this was a 14-foot sign, I believe, and it's 75 square feet. And just so you know, I did look up the maximum allowed square footage for the signage, and it's 772 square feet.
That's taking into account both frontages, Dustin?
Yeah, that's a frontage of 108 feet along Ohio and 85 feet along Shipple, for a total of 193, and multiply that times four.
Would it be easier from a going-forward standpoint and a longevity by the action of this commission to, if we agreed to just waive the ability to add the east-west along Shipple frontage, if we wanted to modify the available, I mean, we could be agreeable to just being allowed the Ohio frontage times the four square foot. That may be easier than defining, again, someday this won't, may not be Discover Dental, and...
I don't know that we can do that on a, without going to a PC, to a planned designation. Is that right, Dustin?
Right. Any extra limitations that you want to put on the zoning district would require a planned commercial district.
So we'd have to be within the boundaries of C3 or go to PC?
Very good.
Yeah, I guess my only, 30 feet, I'm trying to get an idea, what's Bank Six's? What I'm trying to get away from, I guess, from my point of view and trying to help you get what you want, is I wouldn't want to see a Bank Six sign in your front yard. I think it looks okay with Bank Six because it's a two-story building, but that same sign right there in front of your office, to me, if that meets, what do you think, is that a full 30-foot sign then? 24 feet? 18, 24 feet? So I'm assuming if that's a 24-foot sign, it...
23 feet.
Yeah, and it probably matches the two-story building that's there, and with you being there and then having it set back, just having it signed there. So I'm trying to come up with, from my own point of view, is a happy medium of what is okay to do a PC3, and what can you live with, and what can the commission live with, that it doesn't stick out like a sore thumb, but it achieves what Dr. O'Hara's looking for.
Yeah, we're not, we're not after that either, and understand, you know, what you're trying to protect against, so I think we can get there. It's just how we choose to...
Also, for clarification as to how we measure sign area, this is what we measure. We don't measure the base. And so for Bank Six, their sign is 95 square feet. However, they have a very tall base on it. So the 95 square feet is what is up at the top portion here, measured around there is 95 square feet. This is not, this is considered the base and not part of the square footage of the sign. It's part of the height, but not part of the square footage.
What, Dean, I would ask this of you, and excuse me, but what other, if we go to PC3, we're talking about going to PC3 simply to control the size of the sign. What other, then everything else would remain compatible with C3 zoning? Can we do that? And what limitations would that create on the owner down the road?
There are, there are some cases, the one that comes to mind would be the now defunct nail salon that Mr. Mace is marketing at the corner of Faith Drive in Ohio. That property was zoned C1 for, it used to be a dental office. Nail salons were not allowed in C1, so the planning commission recommended that it be rezoned to planned C2, but the only C2 use that they allowed was nail salons. And so the planned districts have been used for two purposes. One is that a commercial district has a whole range of uses that neither the applicant desires to have, or there would be concerns about compatibility. So the planned district is used to, in some cases, limit uses.
Right.
For instance, if you, and you'd have to get into detail with that, but if you said you thought this should be planned C3 because grocery stores should not be permitted on this lot, which is a C3 use, then... permitted on this lot, which is a C three use, then planned C three has been used to get a defined list of C three uses that are more flexible than C one or C two, but don't give you the whole gamut of C three uses.
Yeah, I understand that, but my question was, we could let it have all the uses of a C three, but just the only limitation on the PC would be the sign size?
That is correct.
And, and did we do that for Dylan's? Did we get into a big discussion about sign size when Dylan's went, and they, by the way, are a transition area, they're going from C three to R? Did we get into a big discussion about their sign size?
No, nobody got into a big discussion about their sign size because everything they did was permitted within the C three district.
But they had, didn't they have to rezone that C three? Is that?
It was already zoned C three.
Oh, it was already, C three is on farm ground?
Yes, since the late nineteen seventies, actually.
Yeah. Do we typically get into sign sizes on C three? Is that something we typically try to control?
Well, I will just suffice it to say that our C five and our C three sign regulations are very, very, very generous. And when we have franchisees or different restaurants or retail that come to town, they generally can't believe how generous our sign allowances are. So it's really hard. I, I couldn't tell you, but Dylan's probably has somewhere in the range of between fifteen and twenty percent of the allowable signage that they could have based on their frontage. So most of our retailers don't use the amount of sign area that they can. The main difference in this case, and we had a long discussion with the Board of Zoning Appeals, the primary difference is in C one, it puts a cap on the maximum sign size. And what their debate was that this lot is about three times wider with frontage than a typical C one lot, and the C one district doesn't make any allowances for that. Your thirty-two square foot is the maximum, whether you have seventy feet of frontage or two hundred and ten feet of frontage, whereas the C three has a sliding scale. And so in C three, your sign is proportional to your building frontage. And so that has been the argument as it relates to this property, is that it has more frontage and more arterial street frontage and is not characteristic of a smaller C one zone lot.
Okay.
And so the attractiveness of C three is it has a sliding scale for signs as opposed to a fixed maximum.
But certainly, one of the reasons we would want to look at putting a limitation on that, they would, in effect, if we approved C three, straight C three, they would have the ability to put larger than a twenty-foot by thirty-five-foot sign up there. And, and I'm not saying that they would do that, but that, that would be within their legal rights.
But so does everybody else in C three.
Exactly.
And do we have any of those? Typically, you wouldn't put it, their sign up must be bigger than the building.
What we've experienced around the market and around the state and region is oftentimes landlords and the property owners are the, they, they guard that gate pretty, you don't want to, we don't want a tenant to come in and junk up the property, particularly in a multi, multi-tenant environment, and allow that type of thing.
And my experience has been that comparable cities with comparable zoning districts have one to two square feet per lineal frontage of the building.
If you will look at the bottom of this handout there where there's a little asterisk, and it says, please note that as part of site plan approval in planned commercial districts and planned development districts, the planning commission may establish sign limitations that are more restrictive than what the district sign regulations allow. And this commission has done that consistently and with regularity on South Ninth Street, less so on South Ohio. But if you go down and you look at Spangles, you look at Burger King, you look at Applebee's, you look at Red Lobster, you look at Walmart, you look at all those entities down along South Ninth Street, they all have less than the amount of signage that they could have because they're all planned districts and the planning commission limited the amount of signage to one pole sign or one ground sign, say, in the case of Chili's.
Well, it sounds as though that is an option that you might consider entertaining.
Again, I, I, we would be open, I mean, we don't have a need for, and aren't going, we're not going to use that, that amount of signage anyway. I still, I, I think what may be easy to do is limit it to the street frontage on Ohio. Part of our, part of our argument, if you will, is that, you know, that, that Ohio frontage is indicative more of C three than what you see behind it and in that corner by way of size. So we could, I mean, by, for ease of documentation, that parcel would be limited to the allowable signage for its Ohio lineal frontage and not the Shipple side.
But what would that be?
I think, yeah, I think that's still going to be a pretty large number.
Four hundred.
Four hundred with the C two. Four hundred and thirty-two square feet would be the allowable signage if that were the case.
And that's forty-five now, so we're going from forty-five to four hundred allowable. Not saying you would.
And that's total, that would be, that four thirty-two would be your, your ground signs, it would be your wall signs, all of, all of your signage added up together and combined.
So they could place something on the building, which is considered part of that square footage there, the wall signs total?
Correct.
I don't think Dr. O'Hara has anything on the building now, is that correct? No, all of your square footage is?
Correct.
Is there any real reason why you didn't go for C two instead of C three? Because C two still would give you over a hundred square feet of signs.
Yeah, it's still a function of flexibility for that tenant space as well, and it seemed appropriate, given its location and adjacent to the other C threes. So, I mean, that was the, that was the thinking.
And we haven't even bothered to look at the list of uses that this opens up, but so, but that's the real reason it gives you more flexibility.
Some of those uses that you'll see, and to use, to use Mr. Andrews' analysis of a grocery store would be restricted simply from a parking standpoint. Once you get in and you look at occupancy and things like that, I mean, given the lot size and give it, given the amount of available parking, some of those uses that we could potentially put on that site wouldn't be applicable.
Right.
So it's limited, it limits itself simply by the way it's built.
Any other questions for the applicant? Are you none? Well, thank you, Jeff. We'll open up for public comment at this time. If anybody has any things they would like to address, questions, concerns, now would be the time.
Hi, I'm Alan Reed. I have a orthodontist office on Cloud Street, nine twenties Cloud, in the northwest corner of the Shipple addition property or that block. I would just say that I'm in favor of whatever you want to do that would allow him to have his sign, whether it's C three or PC three or, or whatever with restrictions. I think he's done a nice job of improving that property. I'm confident that whatever he does will reflect the nice job he's done so far. So, you know, I'm, I'm certainly not in opposition to it.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, let the rec.
He's my competitor too.
I guess I'll let the, the record reflect that Robert Pruitt sent in a letter as well that you all received in favor of Dr.'s request, and I believe Mr. Pruitt is on the corner of Cloud in Ohio. So he'd be maybe one or two lots away. Just want to make that as record to putting that in there. Any other public comment? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action or questions of city staff.
I would just point out in line with Mr. Purney's comment or question that one option that is available through a planned C three is that one thing you could do is through a planned C three is have the, make a condition that the property be subject to the C two sign regulations as opposed to C three. In the C two sign regulations, at one square foot of sign area per lineal foot of building frontage and a limitation of two per business, then you're talking about a total sign area of a hundred and ninety-three square feet, which might be more in the ballpark of what you were looking at. So if, if you look at option two, and you said that the planning commission could recommend a lesser change to planned C three with a list of prescribed limitations, one possible limitation would be to recommend planned C three and condition it on the property being subject to the C two sign regulations.
C two also allows it still to be thirty feet, though, is that correct?
Yes.
C two allows both co-occupants to put up their own signs? You said two different, one sign per occupant?
Two, two per business. So if there were two businesses in the, in there, each business could have two signs.
But C three makes no limitation whatsoever, and it would make some sense just looking at the front of the building.
Right, C three doesn't limit the total number of signs.
Potentially be a sign on the front of the building or in the front of the building that made it clear that there was a separate business there, assuming they, they lease it to another company.
I cannot cite it as my example anymore because they have combined everything and put them on two pylon signs, but at one time, Midstate Plaza had fourteen pole signs. Because there was, there was no limit on the number of signs that you had numerically, it was just a limit on square footage. They've taken those fourteen signs and combined them into two nice pylon signs at the entrance. But that, the distinction between C three and C two and C one is that C three only limits square footage, it does not limit the number of signs. So one option that you'd have available would be to recommend a planned C three, which would give you C three uses, but make the property subject to the C two sign regulations, which by our calculations, you would have a hundred and ninety-three feet of building frontage times one square foot equals a hundred and ninety-three square feet total.
That'd still allow them to have multiple poles, though, right? Or multiple monuments or whatever?
Yes. And what the planning commission has often done in the case of properties along South Ninth Street, for instance, whether it's Applebee's or a place like that, they have essentially said a limitation on the planned C three or planned C five that, subject to having one pole or ground sign not exceeding X number of square feet, and then wall signs based on the building frontage. That has been the most common way that the planning commission has addressed that.
I think I'd probably feel more comfortable with that. In driving that location, it, it seems like the, the C three category is probably a lot more suited for that property than C one, given its size and the proximity of the, of the other C three properties there. It would just be hard for me to see even two pole signs there, two monument signs. I, I would probably rather see us keep that, limit that to one pole sign or one monument sign, not to exceed a hundred square feet, and then two building signs, not to exceed fifty apiece or something like that. Rather than make it C two where you could have, or PC two where you could have multiple pole signs.
And if we all, if we alter this application from the request of C one to C three to C one to PC three, is, is the hearing process still okay? Everything done in the hearings okay?
You can do anything at this meeting that is more restrictive than what was advertised. You can't do anything that's less restrictive.
I just didn't want to get back into that long process of multiple hearings on. Yeah. So we can go less restrictive or more restrictive.
You can be more restrictive, you cannot grant something that is less restrictive than what was requested.
The only thing I may add to his remark is maybe just giving them a total square footage, let them divide that up how much ever it is, rather than restricting fifty, fifty, and then the remaining balance would be a total square footage, total height.
Total height, yeah.
And a total, a maximum of a total height. We just have to, we have to figure out what that is. It's allowable is thirty. The one next door, which I agree upon and other people maybe shook their head, is Bank Six, which is eighteen feet?
Twenty-three.
Oh, sorry, twenty-four.
Ninety-five square feet.
And he was requesting fourteen before, and we don't know how tall that sign is. Is that a ten-foot sign now? Nine-foot?
Nine something.
Well, I think it's like nine and a half.
Okay, so if you got nine and a half, the one next door is twenty-four, and he needs extra space, somehow you're going to come up with a number.
Fifteen feet, does that, does that give you guys what you need to do?
The key there, sorry to speak in the audience, the key there would be that base and getting it expensive, if that's what has to be. That's part of the reason we have the height is because that base was built, so, yeah, fifteen feet would get us there.
I don't think this is a question for you. A question for Dean or for you? If, as a commission, we cannot decide among ourselves what to recommend the changes for, how does this work? Does somebody have to, if an original motion does not pass, then do we come back and do an alternative one? Or does Dr. O'Hara needs to come back and go through the process again?
We've had cases where a motion's been made and not seconded, which means that if it's not seconded, it dies for lack of a second or any support. If you have a motion that fails, then you can have an alternative motion.
Seems like we spend a lot of time trying to design signs for property owners. I have, I have some difficulty with that. I mean, I'm sitting here trying to imagine twenty-four-foot sign for this big and this kind, and really, the property owner needs to make the sign match the business and be attractive. And I think most people have. The problem we have here is our sign regulations seem to be wrong. We need to someone, somewhere down the road, deal with our sign regulations and get those cleaned up. But if the property owner can say, hey, I can live with this sign, then I would be of agreement to make this a PC three with this sign that might meet your needs. If you're saying eighteen or twenty-foot high or fifteen-foot high and this big meets your needs, then wall signs appropriate, then I live with, but I'm not going to be, I can't sit here and design your sign for you.
I, I can.
Patrick can because he's assigned for me, I'm.
Yeah, but see, I'm, I'm in the opinion, let's have it be C three. Why, why would an owner of a property put something up that's going to be worse than ugly in your eyes? It's going to, it's going to be, it's going to negatively impact.
Yeah.
Well, but that sign in Las Vegas isn't negatively impacting their business.
No.
And so I can't believe that an owner's going to do something that negatively impacts his business. Having said that, if we're ready, I'll make a first motion, then we can see what, what we throw at it.
I'm ready for it.
All right.
Well, I, I think some of this does need to get discussed further. I, I have seen people put up signs for lots of reasons, and, and some reasons are to be an antagonist to their neighbors in terms of both view and the content on the sign. So I, I guess, once, but I think my point is, is that once you put that C three designation on there, while our applicant might have totally pure reasons for doing what he wants to do, the next person that owns that property down the line may or may not. And there's nothing that we can do about that once that has changed. But whereas if we do make this a planned C three, then, then right now, we can make it fall into some kind of guidelines and give them some options of what they can do, height and width and, and that type of thing, to where it looks like it falls in with the nature of the rest of the businesses there, and also gives the future owners some flexibility as well.
Still ready to entertain a motion if there's no additional comments.
I, I would be willing to, okay, well, I, I would make a motion that we approve application. Forgive me, Dustin, do we need to also cite the, the reasons on here that we are?
It would be helpful if you declared some findings with whatever motion you make.
Okay. Okay. I, in the, I'm sorry, in the application, Z twelve dash twenty-four, the, in, in my motion, I find that the, the property is suitable for zoning to a PC three. It does fit the character of the neighborhood and the other businesses. There is adequate public facilities to support that, and the conformance of the proposed rezoning fits comprehensive plan. And, and there is no opposition, and, and there is in favor of this from the neighboring businesses. And along those lines, I will make the motion that we approve this application as a PC And along those lines, I will make the motion that we approve this application as a PC3 with a 15-foot height limitation, a single ground sign, whether that be monument or pole, and limit to 200 square feet for the, the pole sign and the building signage.
PC3 already limits to 195 square foot. Didn't you determine that?
No. That is the C2 district.
That was C2?
Yes.
We have a motion that.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second. All in favor, and again, by saying aye?
Aye.
Same sign, no?
No.
Have one no? So 5-1?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. We'll go on to item number three, application M12-13, filed by Ruthie Yost Trust, number one, request an amendment of the future land use map of the Salina-Kansas Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use designation of a portion of the Yost addition. City staff, Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, if you could put up the map, that is the future land use map for the city of Salina, that will be the focus of discussion on this first item. And we've, this is actually, since the comprehensive plan was recommended for adoption by the Planning Commission in March of 2010, this is the first formal amendment that we have brought forward for the Planning Commission's consideration. And you're going to have to scroll up, John. What we are talking about is this area right here, which is 133 acres. It's located at the southwest quadrant of I-135 and Waterwell Road. And as we outlined for you, this map here obviously extends beyond the city limits of the city of Salina, and the area that's included in this map would be what we call the urban service area, or the future planning area for the city of Salina. And as you can see down at the bottom, the city is broken down into a number of land use categories, and one we focused on last year and relates to the public school sites was this public, semi-public classification. But we have two classifications, commercial and another one, employment, that are identified in this general area. And so, what you see here is that the very northern portion of the Yost addition, next to the interchange, is shown as future commercial. The KDOT facility here is shown as public, quasi-public, but could just as easily be purple for employment center, because it is zoned I-3. And then you've got the industrial properties over here on the other side of Ninth Street. So, the question before the commission is, should the future land use plan be reexamined in a portion of the Yost addition away from the interchange proper? And we've highlighted some information there for you. We've got two maps and two references. One is the future land use map, the other one identifies economic development hubs. And again, it points out that the future land use map is a guide. It, it should not be viewed as something that's written in stone and is not subject to change, and it indicates that, that you should be guided in your zoning decisions by the land use plan generally, but not be locked in to that. So, what, what it indicates is zoning applications that are beyond the range of land uses and intensity indicated on the future land use map may be reasonable in limited circumstances where projects further the intent reflected by general guidance of the map, or further other goals, objectives, and policies of the plan. And so, what we've highlighted for you is the commercial category emphasizes retail and service businesses, office, and civic and institutional uses. The main potential zoning districts are C3, C5, C6, C7, and Plan Development District. In the employment category, the primary uses are light industrial and warehousing, heavy industrial, manufacturing, the airport itself, educational facilities and campuses, and rail and support facilities, and the potential zoning districts are I-1, I-2, I-3, C-1, University District, and Plan Development District. And as far as location criteria, it says that the types of uses and employment areas should be located in proximity to support services with good access to major arterials, truck routes, belt highways, near airports, or as extensions of existing industrial uses. Traffic should not feed directly onto local streets and residential areas, and the uses should be located away from existing or planned residential areas. As far as the airport industrial hub, it says that the airport area is a major employment, education, and training hub for Salina, will continue to be so in the future, and that Salina should continue to build on this synergy of education and training, employment, and transportation uses in this area. Manufacturing warehouses, light industrial, and large-scale general businesses should be encouraged to locate in the airport area. And I think basically this goes to a judgment call for you as to how you perceive this What the Planning Commission did back in 1990, they were concerned that uses that might not directly need or benefit from interstate proximity might be pushed out of those areas by other commercial uses. So the C7 district was created, and a lot of the areas around the zoning of interchanges was zoned for C7, which has a more limited scope of uses, things like restaurants, motels, truck stops, travel plazas, to try to service and pull travelers off the interstate highway system and have them come into Salina for services, or make purchases, or things of that nature. And so we have seven interchanges around Salina, so they are a finite resource. We have the southwest and northwest quadrants of Magnolia that are still developable. Portions of the North Ohio interchange have some commercial development potential, but most of the other interstate interchanges are built out. And so, what you see here is that this quadrant, this quadrant, and this quadrant of the interchange are shown for future commercial use. So some of the things that we believe that you should look at are whether a plan amendment is justified by changing conditions in the community, whether the amendment advances goals and policies in the plan, if there's a public need for changing the map, whether the need would best be served by changing the land use designation of the site in question compared with other available property, and whether the change would negatively impact the surrounding area. So those are things that you're asked to consider in looking at this. I've asked John if he could to look at the, or call up the zoning around the I-70 North Ninth Interchange and the Crawford and 135 interchange. And what you see at Ninth and I-70 is, it's really dark here, but this dark color here, this is all C7 property. This is the Petro II complex. You've got a convenience store, travel plaza here, McDonald's here, a motel here, and then tucked in behind that, you have I-3 zoning and grain belt supply. Here, you've got commercial zoning, and then tucked in behind I-2. If you go to, can we go to West Crawford, John? What you'll see here at Graves Boulevard and Westport is you've got C7 right at the interchange, and you've got commercial uses, restaurants, and a travel plaza here and another restaurant. And then tucked in behind, as you get up Graves Boulevard, is I-2 zoning in the second-tier locations. We actually have a couple truck terminals up in this I-2 area here. So, the applicant on behalf of the Yost Trust is justifying this amendment based on a couple of things. One is that the property's been zoned C7 for about 10 years, and there's been no interest in developing the property with C7 uses, and also the fact that if this request is approved, there would still be about 30 acres of C7-zoned property available for highway commercial uses at this quadrant of the intersection. So, amending the comprehensive plan is not something that you would do lightly, and your options on this particular item would be to reaffirm the existing comprehensive plan, and this would maintain the current boundary, which shows this is commercial, which would not support a change to I-2. Or the other option would be to look at this whole area and say it all ought to be an employment center. Or the third option would be to look at just this portion here and say that is a second-tier location, it's not a prime interchange location, it's next to the KDOT facility, that should be considered as a future employment area. When you go back and look at this, this area, and I, John, if you could go to the Economic Hub map, I don't know if that's the, and these maps don't exactly, the land use map in this aren't serving the same purpose, but you see that in this map, in terms of South Ninth Street commercial area, it is predominantly right on the Ninth Street corridor and is focused on the area east of I-135. And on this map, the Yost addition, which is right here, is shown as part of the airport employment area. So part of this decision for the Planning Commission is whether you perceive this area west of I-135 as being closer tied to the airport employment area as opposed to the South Ninth Street commercial corridor. So when we are looking at this from a recommendation standpoint, the future land use map is a guide, it's not a predeterminant of land use for any one site or specific location. The site for which this amendment is being requested is located west of I-135. It's outside the South Ninth Street corridor as far as economic activity. It's only 8.77 acres of a 19.9 acre tract, and it is a second-tier interchange location, and on the economic development map is shown as part of the air, airport area economic hub. For those reasons, we believe an amendment of the future land use designation can be justified. However, if this is perceived as, as an important part of the interchange location, or you perceive this as really part of an extension of the South Ninth corridor, then maintaining the current commercial employment area land use boundaries is also a justifiable recommendation. But we think a case can be made based on the fact that this is west of the interstate, it's not part of the South Ninth overlay district, and the particular tract that we're looking at here is what we would call a second-tier site, not sitting right at the interchange. So, as a general rule, the Planning Commission should never recommend a zoning change that is not consistent with the comprehensive plan or the future land use plan, and for that reason, these are put in this order, that you should consider whether amending the plan is justified first, and if that amendment is justified, then that would support consideration of the next item, which is an actual zoning change.
Any questions for city staff?
Just happen to have one.
Perfect.
Is there, is this zoning change or plan amendment change being recommended based on the likelihood some industry's going to go there, or based on the desire to start marketing this to industry as opposed to more commercial use?
Well.
Is there a business plan for there right now, or are they just wanting to increase the value of their property, or the potential value of their property?
I think the next agenda item would be.
I would, I would not, I would not characterize this.
If we don't approve this.
I would not characterize this as speculative. I would characterize it as this comprehensive plan amendment is before you because I-2 zoning is needed to accommodate a truck terminal, which is a very specific use. And if the, if you believe that the, the entire C7-zoned area there should be retained exclusively for commercial retail development only, then you should not consider amending the plan. But if you think that this is a second-tier location and that there's still the, the primary interchange service area available, the other alternative that we are not, we don't think to find any support is, is to wipe out all of this commercial and make it all industrial. But this is coming before you because there's a real business and a real prospect that we have examined their plans for and determined that I-2 zoning is needed for it.
So, Bostleman's, help me out, what's Bostleman's? Is that a truck terminal?
Bostleman's and Petro II, those are all truck stops and truck travel plazas.
But not a terminal?
No. A truck terminal is an industrial use where freight shipments come and go and are broken down.
Right.
But the, the general focus is just on, on the land use areas, the, the employment area that we've shown you, the, the purple and the airport economic hub. And so really, if you're looking at it from that perspective, do you see this, in fact, as part of the airport employment area, where truck terminals would certainly be encouraged? Or do you see it as part of the South Ninth commercial corridor, where a truck terminal would not be encouraged?
Dean, and I've read all, everything inside here, but help me understand, without going back and looking at, did the Yost Trust put this together specifically for KDOT? Did KDOT want that ground back there, and so they put the road in for it, or how did that come about?
Yes. We, you could, and Mr. May's, may or may not, all the background of it, we'll, we'll call it a brokered marriage that city staff helped put together between the Yost Trust and KDOT. The KDOT wished to develop their maintenance facility. In order to do that, they needed access, and they also needed access to city water and sewer. And so the Yost addition was basically a partnership between the Yost Trust and KDOT. KDOT already owned this, the Yost Trust needed this, the KDOT needed access across the Yost property to here, and so KDOT constructed this, but only fronted a portion of the money with the Yost addition being responsible for repaying a portion of that as well. But without the cooperation of the Yost Trust to plat this, to create right-of-way for this street, to give this access, that maintenance facility would not have been possible. But basically, city staff brought the Yost Trust and KDOT together to put this package together. And KDOT was the driving force because they owned that property, they wanted to have a maintenance facility, and they wanted to have it in some proximity to I-135.
Dean, is that Western Auto Warehouse over there, is that considered a truck terminal or a warehouse?
It would probably be a mix of both, but probably closer to a warehouse. The difference between a truck terminal and a warehouse is a warehouse. between a truck terminal and a warehouse is a warehouse usually has a very large square footage and, and items are stored there to go into distribution. A freight terminal or a truck terminal doesn't have very much storage that stays there at all. It just has a lot of, of truck bays where cargoes are, are broken out and, and transferred to other trucks. So, the, the warehouse has a lot of area where product is just stored, waiting to be distributed somewhere where a truck terminal or freight terminal, different truckloads are broken down and put on other trucks to go other places. The UPS facility out on West North Street would be an example of a truck terminal. Bradley Trucking, what they have on the, across from Crestwood on Waterwell is a truck terminal.
Any other questions?
Yes. If the entire tract there that, that is now PC-7 were put into, into this category of, of employment area, it says a retail service as secondary as possible. So, if we put the whole thing into employment district, would you still have a truck stop or convenience store in that northern part, which is currently zoned PC-7?
You, you could, but if, if you did that, you would be, let's say that two years from now, the Yost Trust came back and they said, "We would, we've got, this is zoned I-2 here, and now we'd like to take all of this and zone it I-2 because it's employment center." They would have the option to do that. So, it, it's really, you can always develop commercial uses in industrial zoned areas, but you can't do industry and commercial areas. However, the, the other thing to look at is, is the development standards that differ between commercial and industrial. But if you were to say that you saw this whole thing as employment center, which was alternative two, then certainly the C-7 zoning wouldn't necessarily change. It's just that the vision of that is different. But what it's saying is that down the road, if there were future proposals to have additional industrial zoning, then the comprehensive plan would support that. And that, that is certainly one way that it could be looked at. I don't think staff was, was prepared to write the entire area off as a, as a C-7 area at this point in time.
Dean, am I correct, though, if, if that was the case, if we did approve it that way, then an industrial, an I-2 designation would allow them to have large areas of parking that were gravelled instead of paved? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah.
If we only write off the portion that's being requested, leaving some for C-7, is that portion that's being left adequate in size for the type of development you would typically see at an interchange?
I would, I would say that likely this piece at, you've got 8.77 acres here. You have a little over 11 acres left in here. That's probably not large enough to get a Petro II or Bosseman's or, or Flying J type facility. But if somebody wanted to put a motel or a conference convention center, whatever, right there, that, that leftover piece would certainly accommodate that. Or some smaller scale travel plaza. And then on this side, you have lots that are 10 and 8 acres apiece.
I would contend that typically a motel next to a truck terminal is less than popular. If it's got dirt roads and all that, just the appearance makes the motel less than attractive to constructor. I'm just a little concerned, you know, we say that area's not being developed, but we could have said that probably about Schilling and, and Magnolia a few years back. But the city is moving that way. I'm a little concerned to start using up that, as you said, a pretty valuable resource in interchange with opportunities for, you know, business type development at that interchange, to change it to commercial or industrial.
And if this, if this were not a second tier location, like what you see at, at Ninth and I-70 or Crawford and I-135, I think that, that we would have felt that way. But this, what they've done is, is taken the secondary or second tier location and selected it, leaving what we would consider more the prime commercial location intact. The other thing, which I don't, we may have mentioned and, and Mr. Stack could elaborate on, but I was involved with the grant application to KDOT for construction of the Waterwell Interchange. And one of the justifications that KDOT had for funding and building that interchange was that it was a better access for truck traffic to the Airport Industrial Center and to the South Industrial Area than Schilling Road, where the trucks have to compete with a lot of commercial traffic and, and drive through a residential area. But, but part of the message sent with the construction of Waterwell Interchange was that that was the preferred location for truck traffic entering the city because you can, you can get off here and go to the Phillips Lighting or to the South Industrial Area or over to the Airport Industrial Center on Waterwell, and you're not competing with the commercial Walmart traffic and, and what you see at Ninth and Schilling. So, I don't know if Mr. Stack has anything to add to that, but there, there is a different character to the Waterwell Interchange than the Schilling.
Yeah. I can't, I can't add anything more than, than Dean's already said. That is, that's, that's, he said everything that needs to be said for that. The Schilling intersection is just more, it's just, it's busier. It's, there's a lot of residential, a lot of, you know, with the Walmart. I mean, it's just, it's just a different feel than this Waterwell Interchange. So, he's exactly right. What this was meant to be more for industrial use.
I would add, or just a comment, I guess, on there, though, is I would say that even though they've selected a different site that's further down, and my thought process is first, the first person in is going to set the tone of how this finishes out. Whether they've selected a secondary site down, once that's in, I don't know that you're going to get the motel or the truck plaza or whatever to go in. I mean, however, you're getting ready to set the tone of that whole area there, in my opinion.
That's right. I agree.
And I think that that's something that's, I'd love to hear from the applicant first because that's going to be a decision. And then the commission has to decide, is, is that the way it's going to go? Because in my opinion, and in my expertise, whatever I hold in resident, in, in real estate, you're getting ready to set the tone of that whole area.
And that is the difference between alternative two and alternative three is in alternative two, as Mr. Purney pointed out, you're basically saying, you know, this, if this goes in there, this probably isn't going to be a, a commercial retail type area. It may lean towards, more towards that as an employment area or employment center, whereas option three or alternative three is more limited. And it says, well, this is a secondary site, but we still see the remainder of that Waterwell frontage as being viable for a commercial retail or highway commercial. So, you've got to look at it that if, if you think you're go this direction, that it's not going to be viable for highway commercial development anymore, then option two leans towards that. If you think that there's still a possibility for highway commercial development, even if this goes in the south 8.77 acres, then alternative three is where you would end up.
My feeling was that the, the KDOT facility already sets the tone of the area as being pretty much industrial. And so, that's why I kind of tended to, I tended toward the thought that, that I'd go ahead and call the whole thing predominantly employment opportunities. And if then, at a later date, there is an interest in at least some kind of fuel stop or convenience store, fuel stop combination on that corner, you can still do that under the employment category, under the I category. The only negative is, Mr. Mike's will point it out, is that I allows you to use gravel parking, which-
And what we need to do is-
-would rather not see it up there.
Is to come up with an industrial alternative that does not allow for that. And that's incumbent on staff, both to look at the parking surfacing requirements and also come up with what could be characterized as a planned industrial district. The way the airport authority deals with that is land covenants or deed covenants. They, you have I-2 and I-3 zoning over there at the Airport Industrial Center. However, the airport authority has covenants that if you develop over there, you've got to comply with the covenants as to parking lot surfacing and landscaping and things of that nature. And that would be an option for the Yost Trust as well, is they could have their own deed covenants or whatever as far as what they would want to see. And Mr. Mays could speak to that. But the, the primary difference between two and three is that under two, you're basically saying that you don't see a viable future for this as a highway commercial development, whereas under three, you're saying this is a limited exception, but, but the frontage should, you still view that as suitable for highway commercial development.
Any other questions? We can hear from the applicant if you're all done. Mr. Mays?
Jeff Mays, Compaire Realty, 157 South Seventh. Interesting conversation for sure. There's two different questions at hand here, both the zoning and then the amendment to the comp plan. It strikes us that making it all employment doesn't throw out the, an employment designation. We can talk about zoning in the other application. But it strikes us that making it an employment area in the entire area doesn't say that the planning commission, be it this one or future planning commissions, doesn't have the right at a later date to see the development coming at it and saying, no, we really feel like that's better used as a finite resource for commercial type development. What it does is it eliminates this step at that future time. We've amended the map to allow for PC-7 to remain, whereas as it's, as it's currently designated, we can't do I-2. So, all we're doing by way of contemplating employment area is eliminating the map amendment. The planning commission would, if we, if you leave PC-7 in, in place, which the applicant, we're not, we're not in favor of modifying the entire area, but simply the designated area for the user that we have at hand, that's coming with a site plan and photos and everything that we've been through a DRT meeting with, to me, it would make the most sense to designate the, the area as employment area, which I think there's a whole lot of argument in favor of that, giving its proximity to the South Ninth Industrial Area and the airport area. Fact is, in the 10 years that we've been marketing the property independently and hand in hand with the Chamber of Commerce, not once have we entertained a commercial service type in, well, in one, in one instance, the Carrico Project, we were really excited and thought this would be an excellent location for them. But the fact of the matter is, the, the property is marketed both by us and the Chamber of Commerce as industrial property and by the way of pricing. It's not priced per square foot. It's, I mean, we're, we're, we were barely able to get it sold in a palatable price range for the owners at industrial pricing on this deal. That's, over the course of the last 10 years, we've never had that truck stop choose to be there, that hotel choose to be there. There's a great deal of developable property closer to the critical mass and frankly, on the other side of, on the other side of 35. 35 is certainly a manmade barrier as you look at the, at the market. So, I, and I guess that's all in the form of a statement, but it seems to me that it would make sense from our chair to make it, to designate it, from a comp plan standpoint, as employment area, leave it in place your PC-7. And if it were ever to go back to a industrial user, we, the owner would have to be here getting authorization by this body for that at that time. And you can recognize that. You'd be skipping this step. Because we'll talk about the zoning idea of it and the, and the user in the next application. Is that accurate?
Yeah. I think that's an accurate statement that if, let's say, you had a truck terminal that was interested in this area because this truck terminal was there, they would still have to come before the planning commission and justify a rezoning from PC-7 to industrial, but we wouldn't be having the debate or discussion about whether this was an employment area or a commercial retail area because we've had the debate this evening.
I think the market, if, if the last 10 years is indicative at all of the future, I think the market has spoken from a PC anything in this area. And if you, again, you, you all are aware of the South Ninth corridor and what's been opened up in the Menards Development, Magnolia Commons Development, et cetera. There's, there's an awful lot of land to be developed before we start talking about this becoming commercial. One, and two, the, you know, the, and not to muddy the waters, but the fashion in which all those improvements were put in was not in the form of specials, but rather cost recovery, which is paying interest and really impacting the marketability of the property as it exists right now, to begin with. The owners of the Yost, in order to make this make sense to continue to develop and not simply leave an ag, is, I mean, they're needing some development activity out there to begin with. And their words are, they were brought to this table and felt like they were being good community citizens 10 years ago in agreeing to do all this. It was critical, in my, in my opinion, for everyone in getting infrastructure across that interstate, getting the water over there and making it shovel-ready green space, which we talk a lot about with the chamber. So, I think we would be in favor if you saw fit to making the map amendment, make it all employment area, leaving the zoning in place, you know, the, up, up at the, at the interchange and just bypassing this step in the future. You're not giving up any authority, I don't think. Any questions?
Any questions for the applicant? Harry, none? Thank you, Jeff. Open up for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Dennis Lawler from the Chamber of Commerce. I'd just make a couple of comments. As Jeff and I were working with the site selection consultant that had been hired by the firm to search for a site, and again, it, early in that process, we didn't know who the user was. And we, we didn't know if they were new into the market or if they were an existing business. But, you know, they examined multiple sites and, and this is where they ended up. John, if you could go to that hub, the, the one you were just there. They went through their strategic process and said, what makes the most sense for them in terms of the site? And one of the reasons they picked this site and, and, and west of the interstate, because they, they had opportunities to look even down at the Waterwell area, it, and, and that exit, and, and look both sides of the interstate. You know, this particular user does business with folks in the Airport Industrial Service Center. It's a good strategic fit for them to be west of the interstate rather than, rather than for them to be east of the interstate where they're over by some commercial users. And so, the idea of, of, you know, what, what's being proposed now, it gives you that flexibility. They're in an industrial area. As Abner said, the KDOT facility's already kind of set the tone for that, provides you flexibility down the road. If you get somebody to come into that next spot that says, "We'll do commercial," my guess is the commercial stuff's going to end up on the other side of the interstate, on the east side, next to the hotel, back over by the car dealerships in that area. So, I think it, that makes the most sense. I would be remiss, though, if I, I wanted to, do want to make one other comment, kind of off subject here. And I would say that, that the men and the women that work at Old Dominion are to be thanked. It's the quality of the work that's occurring and their workforce in Salina now that has led that company to reach the decision, they need to invest more, they need to create jobs, invest multiple millions of dollars in this line of market. So, while I'm at the microphone, I certainly want to give a tip of the hat to the folks that work at Old Dominion for the quality job they've done. That message had been, or the quality associated with that was part of the message that eventually came back to us through the site selection consultant. They're doing this in Salina because they've, they, they like what's happening at Old Dominion. So, and that's due to the men and women that work there.
Where's their current location at?
They currently are up in the area around Blue Beacon and Graves Truck Line, in that area. Todd?
Okay.
What are the employees that they, are you talking about here, approximately?
Not, not a lot to begin with, just a couple to begin with, and then the opportunity, a dozen or so, John, in the long run there. But again- But again, that, it creates that opportunity. And Jeff and I had talked through that process, again, about some of the things, we talked about synergy, some of those other things that may come. And really, our discussion was, a lot of that was in the context of those trailing users that may show up that are industrial more than they are commercial, or folks that are, from a zoning perspective, would fit in there. Not the truck stops or the big gas station, but it's going to be the, the truck repair business and that sort of stuff, like you see now along I-70, which started at some point with the user and those other truck-related businesses that came in.
Dennis, we, we know that the, Old Dominion wants to locate there because of existing relationships, obviously, for freight possibilities out there in that area. When you're recruiting a new business to go in out there, the, having a national truck line, is that a draw for the city?
Oh, I think it, it certainly doesn't hurt, Pat. And Patrick, I think it, it just becomes another reason, but they're going to look there, they're going to look at access to the interstate, they're going to look at, they're going to look at the basics. I need X amount of acres of land. Oh, you've got the airport, which shows up here on the map, the Airport Industrial Service Center back there, the opportunity for customers. That's going to impact it more than, oh, there's a, you know, there's another truck terminal here that's a major national player.
It could speak to future commercial-type users because of the critical mass that we're creating on that site of truck users. You've got KDOT, you've got Old Dominion, you've got the other employee base out there. So that's not saying that the interchange isn't ever going to be commercial of some sort or service of some sort, servicing the tire repair or alignment or fuel.
But it's those, it's, it's the kind of things Jeff just mentioned that are more industrial of nature that are going to serve trucking companies or, and those, I think that's what you'd see follow in that area. And again, the, the action before you provides that flexibility, allows that to happen. And if there're going to be somebody that's going to come in and say, gosh, I'm going to do a truck stop or a big gas station or whatever that wants to go in there, you've got that flexibility. I agree with Jeff. My guy tells me that activity's going to end up, for now, on the, on the east side of the interstate more than the west side until you get more critical mass. But this is, this is a step. This is the second group in there, and that's, again, where you begin to build that critical mass. Like I said, once upon a time is what happened up on I-70.
Dennis, you've probably studied this as much, if not more, than anybody in our community about the overall development of our community. In my opinion, if we approve this, we're really writing off that west side of the interchange as becoming industrial. We're going to have dirt gravel lots, we're going to, nobody, there's not enough acreage left there for somebody to put any kind of model commercial business in there. So we're writing off that side of the interchange. And Dean himself said, that's one of our finite resources is our interchanges. And, and is this type of development, in your opinion, industrial, better than maintaining it for commercial in the long run, looking at the district's future potential of growth?
I think so because of that map, Ken, and how it fits to that airport employment area and how it, it's that, I don't want to use the word transition, but you're moving from the interstate back into that airport employment industrial center, it makes, makes more sense.
But you have a lot of acreage behind that, though. You know, my, my thought process, my first thought is, I'm saying to the west, to the west, you got a lot, I don't believe in my years of being alive unless something major happens, is we're ever going to see another, I mean, for us to get the Waterwell, I mean, when we got that interchange, that was a huge deal. I don't know where another one's going to ever come in. I mean, so we're going to lose, I just hate to immediately give that up now that we have that. And I'm afraid that by not only changing this, but what's to follow on that, I just am trying to, trying to be okay with, is that what I want to see, is I-2 with the gravel parking and trucks coming in and out? And again, what I'm, what my thought processes are, is we're, we're setting the tone of that whole area. When you allow this to come in, or any, any gentleman who comes in with a great business or whatever, with gravel parking and, and trucks coming in and out and not a lot of, you know, sometimes I look at them and say, what's, what's the community getting out of this? You know, and what are we, what are we getting in allowing great space to be given up for that? What's, what are we giving for that? And that's just my thought process. That's expensive real estate, in my opinion, that can never be replaced.
One of the areas that I try to compare it to is, is I've always thought that the industrial component of North 9th Street on the northeast quadrant of the interchange was too close to the commercial, and that's been extremely difficult for places like Bonanza and that motel to be successful. Because right across the street is, appears to be industrial, I could be right.
Yeah, that's Green Belt Supply.
And I've always felt that when that was laid out, they allowed industrial to be too close to what commercial was, and it's really had a chilling effect on any successful development on that quadrant of that interchange, I think. And so I think you'd see the same thing here. It might as well either be all industrial or leave it as it is, because it's going to be all industrial. Once you get, all you leave is 11 or 12 acres for commercial development, it's basically going to become all industrial.
Some of that is a question of timing and also ownership, because Green Belt Supply was there before. And, and at the time that it was there, McDonald's built a new restaurant and Holiday Inn Express, now Quality Inn, built a brand-new motel in the 90s there, right next to Green. So it wasn't a deterrent to new investment there. It, it might be more a reflection of not having the right ownership of the, of the motel and the property on the south side of, of Diamond Drive there. But there's been two new motels and a McDonald's restaurant built there with Green Belt being present. But that, that gets back to the, the first tier, second tier perception, how far away do you have to be before you're at the second tier of properties? And what we've tried to show you is that over at Graves Boulevard in Westport, you have commercial and then industrial tucked behind it. At North 9th, you have commercial and industrial tucked behind. The other thing you have to look at is there are four undeveloped quadrants of the Waterwell, I-135 interchange. You've got northwest is undeveloped, or northeast is undeveloped, northwest is undeveloped, southeast is undeveloped, and this is undeveloped. And if you are in agreement that the commercial is most likely to occur at the northeast and southeast quadrants first, then losing this as an available highway commercial area is not, maybe not as big a concern. The other thing, John, if you want to go back to the future land use map, which I think's the very first one, the other thing you'll notice is that this northwest quadrant of the interchange is already shown as employment center and not as commercial. So this is the southeast quadrant here, the northeast, those are still undeveloped and likely to be commercial. This is the third quadrant, and then the fourth quadrant here is already shown as employment center. So it, that's part of, your role as being a planning commissioner is, is casting your vision for how you see that area going. And that's, that's why the comprehensive plan's important, and that's why this discussion is important.
And the north side of Waterwell, it has access to water, to utilities the same as the south side?
Not, not as well. It would be, it's still going to, there's going to be work to do to get things extended farther north. The sewer comes up here and it's capable of serving just this front piece here, and then there's a water line and water well. But as you go north, there's going to be utility extensions and stuff needed. The thing about this site is that it has all the water and sewer and street in place. It's shovel-ready.
Mr. Wilson, to speak to your comments, while I, I completely understand your sentiment. Again, you talk about the available, developable ground that is on the east side of 35 that is yet to be developed and, along with Magnolia Commons, as we represent hotel owners and things of this nature, this is a site that, I, we, we don't even show it because it's not, I mean, they're, they're not going to be interested. One key thing that I'd like to tell you is my experience, but it's an experience I learned from my father in all the years that he spent on the interchanges for Blue Beacon, is the key, the key parts, or the, the most prime property at any interchange is the right and the right. So the, in this case, the southeast quadrant and the northwest quadrant. You want that right and the right. So in this land, we've got employment where, in, in the interstate world, and I wish you were in town to speak to this, but in the interstate world, really, the more prime commercial application would be the northwest quadrant and the southeast quadrant would be the, would be the more, more favorable. Those, that truck stop that's coming in or any of those type of commercial users, they're going to look there far before, long before they would want to look on the, on the other sides.
But wouldn't it be safe to say that the, the north, let me get this right, the northeast and the southeast part of that are already, I mean, I don't think you could buy any of those today. I mean, those are held by people. So the one next to Marshall Motors, not for sale. I mean, that's possibly going to be whoever owns that of, who owns it. The other one on the other side, in my experience, I guess what I'm saying is there are a lot, there's a lot of land out there.
I don't want to, I mean, we, we went round and round with the owners of the Yost Edition about the contract price for the property as it compares to the cost recovery that's in place on that subdivision because the Yost stepped up, again, their perception and their ideas that they were good community partners in agreeing to do this 10 years ago with no, with no possible user in sight and allowing all of those, the cost recovery aspects of it to be applied. They are getting to a place where a price per acre, the price per acre that the market is bringing to them is getting so small that they're getting awfully close to saying, it's not for sale either. We won't sell it for that. We can continue to leave it in ag and it can be as valuable as the industrial application. When you look at the accruing interest on the infrastructure that was put in there over the last 10 years, if we look another 10, 20, 30 years down the road, that may be the exact same thing that you see in the other quadrants.
Yeah. And again, I'm not opposed, my whole thing is that you're putting it on I-35. There's another 8-acre tract back there against the trees in the back corner that, in my eyes, but I just can't imagine that somebody driving down I-35 and seeing that truck terminal is in the best interest of Salina. I'd rather be tucked back further.
I hear that. And we, and frankly, we tried to put them over there as well. The thing that is not illustrated on any of the maps that you've seen is we've got those transmission lines that bisect all of that. And again, the owners of the property think that once those transmission lines went in, whether it's real or not, the perception is underneath these transmission lines, it was very real for Old Dominion, they immediately said, no, we're not interested because of those transmissions. They, they think that side of the street is going to be undevelopable anyway because of those. People think of cancer and health issues by getting over there. So we tried to put them over there to begin with, and they immediately said no because of that. So as you look at the, at the map, there's other things to be considered other than just simply, you know, the property lines.
Sure.
I don't have an opinion, but I'm helping, I want to think out loud with you all, if that's okay. I know that we're concerned about how the city of Salina looks when people come, and we are also concerned about wanting to encourage, and I'm going to use a word that I, you know, what I want to say is really good, clean businesses. But I think at some point, my question is, what interchange will be acceptable for truckers? Not truckers as, as individual people, but, you know, the industry of moving freight? You know, is the next one farther south that we don't even know where it would be yet? Will that be the one that we say, yeah, that's far enough away from Salina, they can use that one unimpeded?
That doesn't have infrastructure in any of it.
But I, I think in order for us to get what I'm, again, terming those good, clean businesses, we need to have truck terminals and freight terminals and things like that that, again, I'm not trying to offend anybody, I don't know if I can back out from that, but just those good dirt-on-your-fingernail businesses that support the kind of city that we want. So I just don't know which intersection we're going to say it's okay for them to live on. And I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud. I don't have an opinion there.
Why does it have to be an intersection, Jeff? I mean, why, why, why can't we move them further down Waterwell Road closer to the, the businesses they're serving? I know that there's no utilities out there, but, but, I mean, that's something we have to look at.
You're not going to go invest $2 million, a $2.5 million building on Wellwater. It just doesn't happen. I, I don't know if it's appropriate for this conversation or for the next application, if we even get there, but I provided pictures and if it's relative for, for your, for your help now, as it relates to the, to the map amendment, Old Dominion is, it's 100% paved. There's an example of the front of the building. There's another, this is a building that they just built out in California, and she provided me some pictures. There's one other picture, I think, John. The, the entire, 100% of it's paved. We're not talking about gravel roads and dump trucks. And I mean, and I, frankly, I kind of agree with, with Commissioner Purney. We've got KDOT sitting on the other side of the property line here, and we're worried about what kind of, what this is going to do to the image of the development. That baby was kind of made when we did KDOT. That's asphalt trucks and, you know, dump trucks, and it is gravel parking and all of that and material being stored. And, I mean, I understand she's all responsible looking to the future, but we're not talking about building a big truck terminal that's a bunch of gravel and et cetera, in this specific instance.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Mays? I'll close the, any other public like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the portion of the public here and bring it back for discussion.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of like Jerry, I, I, Commissioner Box, I, I totally understand that. And when I drive out there, most of the traffic I see is truck traffic, whether that's going to Phillips or whether that's going to the Western Auto Warehouse out there. So I guess I don't have big issues with, with the type of traffic. And like Commissioner Purney said, is, the, the tone has somewhat been set out there with the, with that KDOT facility out there. I guess I, I would see, you know, given the, the pictures that we saw of the building and the, the, what I would hope would be another draw to the area for, for other businesses coming to the, to develop out in the airport area, I, I would think that that would be a, a natural draw for them to, to have a place that they could easily ship their goods But I, and I totally understand your point, too, about setting the tone for a, for an area, so.
I just want to remind the commissioners that this application is just for the designation of employment from, from commercial. So I'd like to keep that in the forefront of that designation, although I think it is helpful that we know that the other one was there because it also allows, hope that whichever way it goes, because if it doesn't pass that way, then I don't know that we'd ever see the other one. So I, I'm glad and I hope everybody agrees that we could see the terminal so we know that there is somebody who's wanting to invest in Salina. So I think it's beneficial to know that that's coming, that we've got a shovel-ready project. So again, I'm open for more questions and remarks.
Your focus on this item should be what you're, you see as the future vision for this area, the Yost Edition. And the second item would be more parcel and project-specific. But this, this should be whether you think it should stay just as it is or whether you think a limited change should be made just for the south 8.77 acres, or whether you see the entire area there that's currently commercial as being more appropriate, employment center as it's shown on the north side of Waterwell Road.
But I, how can we, how, how would we, to allow it to be an employment district and then not vote in favor of someone bringing an application as which may be coming forth next?
You would admonish staff to come up with some industrial alternatives that have higher development standards that are more comparable to, we have done that on North Ohio with our North Ohio Corridor Overlay District, and we've done it to a degree on the South 9th Corridor. But what is, would be incumbent on staff is, as Mr. Mays mentioned, the changing, the future land use to show it as employment area does not take away the commission's ability to look at specific proposals later because the planned C-7 zoning is still going to be intact. And that, that is your lever that you still have, is that when somebody comes forward to try to change other planned C-7 parcels and you look at the merits of their development proposal, that's the time when the, the rubber meets the road, not at this point. You're, at this point, just looking at the general vision for the area.
I'm just going to say before the vote, I really struggle with converting this to industrial. I mean, from my perspective, it is a finite resource. We don't know what the future holds. And if it... the future holds. And if it, if it stays commercial, there's a chance for a type of development that really enhances the look of that intersection and interchange. And there is, as Todd said, an awful lot of, appears to me, an awful lot of land that can be developed into industrial. And I'm not even sure the industrial park is completely full at this time. I read where they're looking for tenants. I mean, there's possibilities there as well for this type of development, I believe. So it, I'm just, I'm just think we'd be giving up a lot in the future. At, at the present time, if we change it, that's my thoughts.
And as it relates to the comprehensive plan, is the one thing that we tried to emphasize in our, in our background report is that we have what we call primary service areas and secondary service areas. And this would be primary from the standpoint that the difference between this and the north side or over at Centennial and Waterwell Road is that this property has water, sewer and paved streets in place and is ready to develop whereas other properties are not. And that's, that's one of the things that makes it different.
Without any discussion, I'd be open for any type of emotion or more clarification from city staff?
Well, I'm going to throw one out there unless you want to, Abner.
Well, you go ahead.
I, I feel that, that changing the comprehensive plan to an employment district and making that a more contiguous piece probably fits in a little bit better. And I don't, I don't think that that ties us down to any future decisions, but, but certainly leaves that open for whatever might happen there. That being said, I would vote for option number two of changing the whole thing to employment.
And the question for Mr. Mike Sell is, of those items that we identified there that it lies west of I-135, that it's outside the South Ninth Street Corridor, that it's being shown as part of the airport area economic hub, are those the reasons, are you in agreement with those?
Those are all the reasons that I would vote to, or I would propose that we do item number two. Yes, that's correct.
I guess I will second that.
Have a motion in a second. Take a roll here. All in favor indicate by-
Can I make a couple?
Sir, can.
Ask a couple of questions before we actually vote on it. Where does, where does the water lines end right now?
Okay, the, the area actually goes, and I don't know, I don't know that John can turn them on. I guess he can. But if you're familiar with the Salina landfill, that is formerly Camp Phillips. And during World War II, a water line was put in from the little plant you see there at Schilling and Ohio. And it runs down Waterwell Road, appropriately named, and out to the Salina landfill. So this line runs all the way out to the Salina landfill and all the way back to Schilling. The actual line itself comes down Waterwell, comes down Ninth Street to this point, comes across right here, comes up and over. And what we explained in our background report is that the line used to run through here. KDOT said, we will not have any lines in our interchange area. You must relocate it. So strategically, moving it here to here to here opened up parcels here and here and here for development by moving that line. And then a sewer was put in here that runs back over to Ninth Street. So again, what makes this addition different than a lot of places in Salina is that somebody can buy a piece of ground and obtain a building permit and they're ready to build because the street's there, the sewer's there and the water is there.
And the dimension of that line continues at that same size all the way up?
Yes. It's a huge line. It's 24 inches.
Having seconded the motion, I'd be willing to, to compromise and go for the alternative motion of just changing this particular tract. But I still think in the long run, it's going to visually be part of-
I did it again. I, I would think that in the long run, this is going to be part of the airport industrial complex, one way or the other. But I would be willing to compromise and go with the, the limited 8.77 acre-
That's not the recommendation.
Yeah, the motion, the motion on-
But the actual motion itself, I'm, you know, that's why I seconded the actual motion itself. But if there's not a lot of- If there's not a majority in favor of that, then I would go with the second, or the, I guess that's the third alternative, the original alternative.
As would I. If that, if that, you know, not without getting a discussion, without a vote, I could withdraw that motion and make it for number three.
Can you withdraw a motion with a second without taking?
Well, I think I would recommend that we vote on the motion that's on the floor and we'll see what happens.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. The first motion in a second for option number two, planning commission alternatives. And if you're ready to take a vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign?
No.
No.
Or aye.
We have a show of hands for Crystal. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Okay, those opposed. Okay, that is a three to three motion. That is a failure to approve. So having a motion that was not approved, the chairman should open the floor for alternative motions.
We'll open the floor for an alternative motion.
Well, I'm, I, I believe strongly enough in leaving it as it is. I think there's potential for other development areas right now. I think one of the issues is the sewer line. The sewer must end at Yost and that's the expensive line to run on out. But maybe I'm wrong. But the point is, I think there needs to be a chance for the community to grow that way and have commercial. So I'm going to make a motion that we, option number one, reaffirm the existing comprehensive plan as it stands.
I have a motion from Mr. Kennedy. Need a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second. Take a roll here. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Aye. That's four to two. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll, option two was not approved. Option one was not approved. That leaves you with an opportunity to advance another motion.
Go ahead.
Okay.
I guess I will move at this point then that we proceed with option two, which is to change, or option three, which is to change the comprehensive plan regarding only the specific 8.77 acres in the south portion of Block One of the Yost Edition.
And I'll second that motion.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Nay.
Nay.
Yep.
Is that three to three?
Three.
It was three to three again.
Three to three. So failed again? Well, then that leaves it the same as the last motion.
All right. Well, can we have a show of hands of who voted in favor of that motion? Okay.
Oh, wait. You're in favor?
Yeah, I'm waiting for the, no.
Oh. What did you say? You're in favor of the motion?
No, I'm not. I'm waiting for, he said in favor. I figured he was saying opposed. I thought, I didn't know we were-
Okay. Well, if we got three in favor, that means we have three opposed.
Correct.
So as, as a staff, we have developed, what, three alternative scenarios there. And so since all three of those have not met with a majority approval, there needs to be some additional discussion of what we as a staff can do to provide guidance on a, a fourth or fifth alternative. I'll just, I'll just walk through what each of those mean. The first vote on alternative two was basically saying that the vision cast for this area is that you see it more like the area to the north and what's west of the creek, which is basically, this is an extension of the airport employment center. That did not receive a, a majority view. The, the alternative was to say, leave this as commercial and as C7. If you, if that was the majority position, then it would not support a potential zoning change on the south 8.77 acres of Lot One to industrial. The third option would have supported limited industrial here as a second tier location adjacent to KDOT, but would not have said that you agreed that the vision for this, that you were ready to write that off as a commercial, highway commercial area. And that, that vision also did not receive a majority of support. So it would be helpful if anything we can do as a, a staff to offer up other options or alternatives to those three that were cast.
I think make a motion that we table this until we get further information.
What, what would that further information be?
There's no decision to be made tonight. It seems like we all have different opinions. I, I don't know that we're going to, any more information you're going to make, give us, I mean, tonight? Do you have enough information? Do you think you could provide us to, to help us all change our minds? Or do we, I mean, I don't, I don't have, it's a tough decision. That's what I'm trying to say. I don't know that there, there's any one of us that really want to make a, doesn't sound like want to make a decision on this tonight.
I second that motion.
They're going to agree.
I'd second that motion. I'm not ready to-
Well, I think in, and I-
Develop a strategy tonight.
And I appreciate the motion. Further discussion on my end. My vote probably changed the whole outcome of how it is and I wanted to clarify why mine is. I'm in favor of the entire thing being looked at as an employment, changes from commercial to employment, meaning we don't have to approve anything. So I'm, but I'm open to going, let's get this process moving forward, that someday it may be able to. But I'm not in agreeance with, which was then the motion number two, which was then, let's just do the eight acres. Because basically agreeing to that, saying that I'm going to approve or we're going to approve, that I'm okay with the plan that's coming after that. Does that make sense?
Yes.
It doesn't make sense?
No, explain more.
Okay. So the, the, what is, what's available to us right now is to say, look, is there a possibility that you would look at changing this to a, a different zoning than commercial? That would be an entirety. That was your first motion. And I agreed with that, saying I, I don't know that I would, I would like to look at it by case-by-case basis.
Which we still would be doing.
I agree. And so I agreed with that. So I agreed with that whole thing of saying by case-by-case basis, we would still be agreeing to that. And that motion failed. But I agreed to that motion. Then the second motion came up, which was by Mr. Kennedy, to leave it alone. And I didn't agree with that one. Then the third option would have been for Mr.-
With the split.
To do the split by only the eight acres. Well, it doesn't make sense to me to allow only one portion of it to be employment and the rest be left commercial at this point. It either all needs to go that way because my belief is if you allow I-2 or employment district to go in there, the rest, you might as well bring the whole thing in because you're not going to, you're not going to put, if it shall be a truck terminal in and have any other commercial stuff come in after that.
John, can you go back to the, to the zoning maps where we have the, the fringe areas being, being I-2 and the, the, or the second tier, your, your-
Yeah, we got West Crawford and we have North Ninth and I-70.
Yeah. We, we've essentially got commercial and industrial being neighbors there in those type of areas anyway.
But you don't have industrial out on the highway. I mean, if you could, I mean, not that it's going to change by-
You can still see the, you can still see the industrial from the, from 135 there.
What would you see? I see hotels, subway and a truck stop. I see Blue Beacon way in the back and I see the truck terminal way in the back. I don't see it right on the I-35.
Well, I, I think that's, that's still the, the case, is it not?
Well, I disagree. There's a big difference between interstate frontage and 400 yards or 600 yards.
I think that's what we're talking about is how far back do you have industrial and for, for commercial to have a chance of success. Industrial's got to be away. Most of us don't stay at a motel that's the front faces a dirt parking lot industrial area. It doesn't give you that secure feeling. So there's a, there's a distance, a space, and that's what we're struggling with here is what's that space that needs to be back? It can't be right on the highway. A good example, one I think Dean isn't, on, on North Ohio at the interchange of I-70, is that industrial where that truck repair place is?
No, that is commercial.
That's commercial.
Yes. Tucked in next to it is a place that was rezoned to I-2 for Foley Tractor who has never built there.
But that truck, whatever truck repair is, is-
Kenworth Truck Repair. That is, that is zone commercial, but right next to it is I-2 zone property that is owned by Foley Tractor.
And then Sandpin on the other side of that interchange is what?
On the north side.
Is that ag?
It's, there's never going to be anything over there because there's no utilities and you've got floodplain on the other side.
But what's its zone?
The county has its own commercial on the northeast quadrant and I think it's agricultural in the northwest.
Okay.
But I didn't ask John to do the same thing at North Ohio, but North Ohio at the, the Kenworth there is zone C7 and the Flying J is zone Plan C7 and Harley-Davidson is zone C7. And then tucked in behind those properties is, is potential future industrial.
Right.
But it, it's a pattern that you see it interchanges. It's just what your perception of, of being a second tier location is.
So you're saying second tier is further down. I'm saying second tier is further west. I'm saying second tier is further south.
Right. And you're, and it's perfectly valid to have a perception that if it's sitting on the interstate, it's first tier. But what, what you will tend to see is that the commercial users who are willing to pay commercial prices want to be right there. But this is, this is Flying J, this is Harley-Davidson, this, I guess, for, to make it, to make it consistent, it used to be zone commercial, but this is all zoned I-2 right here. And it was done for a Foley Tractor facility right here. And there was a lot of that same discussion and debate that the planning commission had about that. But this is Flying J and Harley-Davidson and the Kenworth repair facilities here. And then this vacant tract here was purchased by Foley Tractor Company and they were going to relocate their facility on North Broadway there and they have not to date.
You know, three years ago, we might have been talking about the same quadrant, which would be the southwest quadrant of Magnolia. And now Menards is there. So I assume that's C7.
Yeah, that's, or C5, but yes.
C5, but it's commercial.
It's commercial.
And, and we could have been saying two years ago, nothing will ever go there. Let's make it industrial. And yet, Menards is here. And, and I think a significant enhancement to our community. And, and if that would have been a warehouse with gravel out there, it probably wouldn't have had Menards beside it or a motel beside it. That's my thought.
Well, we have maxed out on the three alternatives that we have made available for, it would be helpful for us and to the applicant to get any guidance from you on additional information, examples, additional details, deed covenants, things of the other options that we can, information that we can provide you that might make that, either provide an additional alternatives or provide you with more comfort about the three alternatives that had been identified. Is, is there any specific information that we could impart to you if this were postponed to help with that information?
To the, to the rest of the commissioners, would the, would a prospective, we've already had a DRT meeting, so obviously you know what the, the lay of the building is going to be. Is that a possibility?
Yes.
Is that stuff going to help or hinder you, your decision?
Well, the, the, the question- Well, the, the question, there is no specific point of moving on to Item 4 from Item 3 if we don't know whether the specific zoning requested under Item 4 is consistent or not consistent with the vision that the commission has for the, the area as a whole. But we would be happy to, I guess, if the consensus is that Item 3 should be postponed to your next meeting, then Item 4 should be postponed to your next meeting. However, before going there, we would be happy to put up information on the specific details related to Item 4, so you can see what we are discussing. But that may only help with the distinction between Option 2 and Option 3. Because it, it's pretty clear to staff that one of our concerns is about the discrepancy between the development standards in our commercial districts and the development standards in our industrial districts, and not just about the uses.
Well, Dean, go ahead, Jerry, I'm sorry.
No, it's, I, it's, I may have confused a lot of people the way I voted, because I was very confused. And then it got to the point that says, when in doubt, don't. And let me kinda explain what some of the confusions were. I mean, we talked about why the next item has some variant on this, but the next item made it very difficult for me to vote for Item Number 3. Because if we voted for Item Number 3, one of the ways that I thought we were, I had no, no way that I could have possibly thought about not approving Item Number 4.
I agree.
And, and I don't know that we can unring that bell, because there are individuals or businesses who are interested and have a specific interest in that. But that made it very hard for me. And, and when I got confused about the whole thing, I'm saying, ah, when it's confusing to me, then I'm not gonna vote other than no, until we can get unconfused. So, I apologize if I made it hard, but that's the way I think through things.
I would agree that if it, it is possible, but it would be difficult if, if the, if the commission said that you viewed this as a future employment center, consistent with the rest of the Airport Industrial Center. Having reached that conclusion, it would be very hard to justify not changing the zoning to a classification that is, lies within the employment center category.
Back up just one second there. You said consistent with the rest of the Airport industrial development. The, the industrial development that's in the airport all has a very consistent, modern look to it, which I'm proud to tell anybody that wants to know, that it's from Salina.
Right.
Can we incorporate that, give it a, I don't know what the name that I wanna use, like we've done in the other Gateway districts or whatever, can we give this-
An overlay?
Yes.
Yes.
But can we do that in the, the, in the comprehensive plan portion of this? Can we, can we expect that to have some kind of a look in the comprehensive plan?
No, that would have to be addressed through the, the zoning aspect of that, that you'd have to, you'd have to say that you are comfortable with showing this as an employment center under Item 3, and then you'd have to say that under Item 4, you're not comfortable with straight I-2 zoning, but you could be made comfortable if, if we were able to come up with an overlay district that had standards that are being proposed here for Old Dominion that would be consistent with the other areas. The other option for doing that would be for the, the owners of the Yost addition to have deed covenants similar to what the Airport Authority has, which raises the bar for the development there beyond what the zoning requires. But that, that would be, it would be incumbent on us to come up with something that was consistent with some of the other overlay districts we have.
I have a motion on the table to, to table. What do we do to call the question? Can that pass? If it can't, then we're back into discussion, but I mean, we really need to act on that motion.
I have a motion in a second to postpone the item. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, the capes saying aye?
Aye.
Saying sign, oppose?
Aye.
So that, that would be, that would be postponed to the February 4th meeting. So we will come up with some information for you about overlay districts and that type of alternative. And the question is, does that motion extend to just Item 3? And would you like to hear the specifics on Item 4 and then vote on that at that time? Or do you perceive that motion to cover both Item 3 and Item 4 being postponed to your next meeting?
I'd ask the motion maker.
You know, and I'm looking for information. I'm having a hard, a struggle with this. If the information on Item 4 would help, help make a decision, I mean, you're gonna have to come up with something like item, like information on Item 4 for I-2 in order for us to make a decision on, on, on the third one. I, I think, I think that we've, we've, it'd be nice to hear it. But I don't know that we, we're not gonna be able to vote on it, because we don't have it zoned to do that.
By tabling Item 4, it would allow the opportunity to talk to the ownership about possible leadership in their-
You wanna stick to, you wanna come to the microphone for the-
That'd be fine, thank you.
Item 4.
That's right.
By tabling Item 4 as well, that'd allow me to go back to the applicant and the owners and discuss other possible ways to address some of the concerns, i.e. gravel parking lots and things like that, internally, prior to the February 3rd meeting. Not only with the applicant, but also with the, with the potential buyer.
With your recommendation then, Jeff, I'd, I'd make a motion to table Item 4. I'd second that.
A motion and second. All in favor, anybody saying aye?
Application is Z12 dash 25.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous to table that. Moving forward then, Dean, is there any reason to do Item Number?
Only to see if, if there's anything in there or not in there that would be helpful to you at the next meeting. We've given you background about the financing and how that occurred in the Yost addition. We have given you a survey of the property. We have given you a site plan that, that showed what, specifically what Old Dominion is proposing to construct. That is not necessarily binding on them, but if there's anything else that we could provide in there that would be helpful beyond what is in here, that, that's probably all we would be looking for. So we, we have given you the historical background on how the Yost addition came about, and the survey of the specific property. We've given you photographs here that we can include in your next packet, and we can try to line up for you some comparison between I-2 and, and C7 development standards, if, if that would be helpful.
I think what would be helpful for me is to understand what they do. How many trucks come in, in and out? What's their purpose? What's the, it's gonna make a big decision on my end of what's the compatibility of what else is gonna go in next door to that, to understand what they actually do. What, I mean, are there 100 trucks that come in and out of there every day? Is that mean the truck traffic coming out of there? Are there 50 trucks? Are they, you know, what's their hours of operation? What's actually going on inside that truck terminal? That would be neighbors to what potentially would come in next to that. That would help me out a lot.
On Number 4, for the application Z12 dash 25.
So we've got a, two motions to postpone those items to your next meeting, and we'll work with Mr. Mays to try to package up as much information as we can about the Old Dominion operation and include that as a supplement as well. As I said, we, we got the photographs to display here, but we can put those in the packet and, and put the specific site plan, the, and then try to get some information about the number of bays and anticipated traffic generation for your benefit.
Okay.
Seems like the previous planning commissions made a recommendation for that to be what it is, and it's, that's what makes it difficult to make a decision based on, on ideas that came from other people that are probably more knowledgeable about it than I am.
I, I gotta tell you, being on that, on that commission when the, when the comprehensive plan was done, there was two years' worth of stuff that went into that, and a lot of meetings, and it was, I mean, God, we looked at hundreds of minute areas, and, and it's hard to put all of that into a vision and think, as Commissioner Kennedy said, 10 years down the road. But, but it was tough, and I think at, at some point, we gave it our best shot and, and went on, but-
Plans are not intended to be written in stone, they're, they're your best. I mean, that's why we do have an amendment process, but they need to be thoughtful amendments.
And these were meetings that were attended by the public and stuff, too, the, the group meetings, and, and we divided into smaller groups. I was on a downtown group, and I can't remember one of the other ones. But, but anyway, it was a great process, but it, it sure made you think about the individual spaces.
I haven't had the time to think about that as much as you have, Patrick.
Well, we've got one more year.
Let's move on to Item Number 5 from the agenda today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Each year, each board and commission that serves at the pleasure of the, as an advisory board for the City Commission, is asked to submit a report to the mayor and city commissioners about the activities that they engaged in in the previous year, and also the participation of the board and commission members. So we've included in your packet some of the major accomplishments that were performed by the Planning Commission in, in 2012, and we had the finalized text amendment contact for the public use district regulations, and also set of sign regulations that you recommended on and were adopted by the City Commission. As part of the follow-up to that, you initiated the rezoning of 14 school sites owned by Unified School District Number 305, which the City Commission gave final approval to those zoning changes last evening. We have reviewed each year the implementation matrix and made recommendations regarding implementation priorities. We had a study session where you looked at conceptual designs for new entryway signs that gateways into the community, and you also looked at making priorities for locations. And the decision was made to start with North Ninth and I-70. And the concept recommended by the Community Art and Design Committee and the Planning Commission was accepted by the City Commission. You had two steady sessions on bike and pedestrian trails. We had a steady session on the neighborhood center and commercial center overlay concepts. We updated you on floodplain remapping and levee recertification, which may come back to the surface again in 2013. You reviewed the, the capital improvement program for conformance with the comprehensive plan. We noted that you heard 42 cases in 2012 compared to 30 in 2011, and only 21 in 2010, but of those 42, 14 were the individual school locations. You looked at amendments to the conditional use permit that allowed the Iron Street Tattoo Parlor to expand, and allowed the pawn shop across the street to have a pole sign. You had multiple public hearings to review the requests or proposal by the Salina Regional Health Center to add clinical space for Veridian over at the hospice facility. You approved final plans for the community theater parking, a new alternative school at Cloud and Hegeman, and final plan for the Dimaru Steakhouse in front of Lowe's. There was only one residential subdivision plat containing 27 lots that you reviewed in 2012, and that was Pheasant Ridge Number 2 over by Presbyterian Manor. You did, at the end of the year, look at a small replat that had seven individual building sites out on Quail Meadows. If you look back to 2011, there were no plats filed. 2010, there was one very large plat, Stone Lake Edition, and go back to 2009, there were no subdivision plats filed. So you have to go back to 2008 where there was any plating activity, and that's an indication that the market is still absorbing lots. You had a public hearing on a proposal to erect flagpoles in Indian Rock Park to serve as cellular antenna supports, and you continued your landscape award program. We have two new members, Mr. Boxa and Mr. Norland. We have two youth members, Trent Brown and Justin Walker, who's over here. Mr. Ryan is serving his second term as chairman, and at the August 31st of this year, Mr. Michael, Mr. Kennedy, and Wally Story will have their terms come to an end. So we have summarized what we, our record for what attendance was in Exhibit B there. We have provided information on term expirations and contact information on Exhibit C. If you see something there that appears that it's incorrect, either as to attendance, or we've got bad contact information, let us or let Crystal know, so she can get that correct and up to date. And then we've, we've highlighted some potential goals upcoming, and also recommendations that you've had previously and currently for the City Commission, one of which was scheduling a joint study session to discuss gateways and other land use issues, having a new property maintenance code for the city, and three items related to the comprehensive plan. And then we have some zoning administrative goals to clean up, one of which I think ought to be, we have identified there on Page Z, consider creating a new planned industrial district similar to planned commercial districts. And I guess the rationale for having a planned industrial district is, is you have that available that gives you the discretion to approve industrial zoning, but to impose stricter standards than what a standard I-2 might be. And, you know, maybe if we had that in place, that would be something that would be helpful when we have these commercial industrial areas in proximity to each other. So, there's still those in the community that, that feel that gravel parking and no landscaping have its place in certain locations, but that certainly another option is to take that off the table. But planned industrial would be a method by which you could allow for industrial uses, but impose conditions or higher standards, or eliminate industrial uses that you think are in the list, but shouldn't be allowed at that location. So, that's our best effort at summarizing attendance and goals and accomplishments for the past year and upcoming year, and we'd be open to any comments or questions or corrections that you have.
Any questions, Dean? None? Thank you for the report, Dean.
If you don't have anything to add or correct or anything, then we would just pass that on as your report to the City Commission, if that's okay with you.
That'd be great. Agenda item would be Number 6, Other Matters.
Other Matters. We have no further matters for you, other than we will be meeting. I've got a, I don't have my calendar in front of me, so maybe I don't have the right date. Maybe the correct date is the 5th. But anyway, it will be the first Tuesday in February will be your next meeting, and this, these two items will be carried over, and we'll try to provide additional information for you about the ramifications of each of those options, and if we can come up with additional options, we'll, we'll attempt to do so. But we have no further business for you this evening.
Great. I would also let my fellow commissioners know, if you get some time to go out to the Yost Drive, spend some time driving around before the 5th, and just kinda look it over the, the whole area. I think that would be kinda beneficial for everybody, to spend some time out there and just see what, what is your idea for that? I know for me, it's kinda sprung on- I know for me, it's kinda sprung on, how do I really feel about it at that, so spend some time out there, and we'll do that. So, we are adjourned.
Todd, you did a great job.